Good evening, I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, April 16th, 2018, and ask our city recorder to please call and roll.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counselor President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. I have a special guest here tonight, Mr. Zach Laurie. Would you like to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? So if you would just walk up to the microphone? That one, uh-huh. And would you bring it toward him, toward ya? All right, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand? Zach, would you start us off? Aye?
(singing) Let's believe in the United States of America, into the republic where it stands one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, sir. Thank you.
Sounds wonderful.
Very proud of you. Thank you, Mr. Zach.
You've got a bodyguard, is that right?
That's right. Well done. All right. We don't have anything tonight under Special Orders of Business, so we will go then to Committee Reports. And we have a couple here. We're gonna start off with the elder, Mr. Lawyer, to talk about the Clydesdale Creek Watershed Council.
Elder.
Thank you sitting to my right. Madam Mayor, members of the council staff, good evening. Matt Lawyer, Clydesdale Creek Watershed Council. We're really excited to come here tonight to talk a little bit about an event that we've decided to put together this year. It started out initially as the sort of grand opening of the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum, and it sort of evolved and morphed into something, I think, that's a little bit more community-centric and should hopefully engage a much broader range of folks and turn it into what we're calling a "Soggy Day at the Park." It's a free event, the Clydesdale, excuse me, Kaiser Rapids Park, that'll be this Saturday. We're actually gonna start it off at 8:00 a.m. with a project, doing the compost around the arboretum trees. We're gonna have Whittaker Middle School out there, once again, helping out. They've committed somewhere between 40 and 100 kids for that event, so there'll be a lot of energy for a short period of time, but it'll be great. The actual event kicks off at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning. We plan on having Adam's Ribs from Adam's Rib Smoker, or Mike Adams from Adam's Rib Smokehouse out there, he's gonna be grilling and giving away hot dogs while supplies last. We're gonna have a couple different inflatable entertainment devices, a large slide, and then an obstacle course for the kids. We will have music of some sort, not exactly sure yet, we're waiting to hear back from a band, but if not, we might just have the PA system going with some music. There'll be nature hikes through the back trails, it'll start kind of down by the amphitheater and then go back through the wooded area. Dorothy Deal, who's currently with the Police Department, but formerly with the Public Works Department, if I recall correctly, is gonna be guiding those, and we're gonna have some other people out there helping with that, including Wilbur Bloom, so if you know Wilbur, he is really good at that. Then Surt will be out there doing some water safety training, and then, once they complete the water safety training, they have the opportunity to go on a boat tour with Mark Callier, taking his jet boat out there. So that's, I think you can do about five people at a time, so it's gonna be one of those things that might be kind of a hot activity to do, so it's gonna be kinda interesting crowding folks around there. And then, again, hopefully get people around the arboretum and checking out the great work that was done by our amazing Rotary Group here in Kaiser. And then, really, just from that point on, just take a look at all the great things that Kaiser Rapids Park has to offer. We do have some of the most unique amenities out there in terms of the natural area. If folks want to go and play volleyball, they can. Got that amazing picnic shelter done by Hans Schneider and his family. We got the, what's the frisbee golf thing out there?
Frisbee golf.
Disc golf. Clearly, I'm a player, right? So you can go out there and throw a disc and get some poison oak and stuff, that's pretty cool. Allegedly. So it's gonna be a really fun event, 10 to 2 this Saturday, and just wanna really encourage folks to come out, check it out, it is a free event. We had another sponsor, Lamont Valley Appliance, came on board and gave us $500 for the event, and so, really, this is just, this has been an event of people that really love the community, really wanna showcase the watershed, 'cause we do a lot of projects down that area and base of species and stuff, and so, we're just trying to give a little back to the city and hope to see a lot of folks out there. And I understand, Madam Mayor, that you may be out there that day as well, correct?
That's right. This would be the Saturday I would have my monthly coffee with Kathy, and rather than have a separate event, I'm just gonna hang out there for the entire time and hope to visit with people, especially some of our young people coming out to volunteer, and just enjoy the time with everybody. So I will be out there from 10 to 2, and I'll see about, or 10 to 1, it says here.
You're gonna have the coffee?
I'll bring some coffee with me. Yep.
Now, I think, there's one other piece that I missed, and I think the Public Works Director can help me on this a little bit. We're gonna have public work staff out there as well, correct? And so, I think we're gonna have the Parks Backhoe, I think, out there, so kids can kinda get a hands-on feel for that. I don't think we're gonna get any really good free labor out of them, you know, maybe, I thought it'd be great to kinda level a field out, but apparently that's illegal. No, but it'll be good, and I think we may have some of the new park staff out there, I'm not really sure the nuances of all that, but I know that we're really excited to be able to showcase a little bit of sort of the outcome of the Parks Fee as well, a little bit, you know, kinda have that present, so we're really thankful to have the city's participation and partnership in that as well, so.
Well, it's nice for folks to be able to meet the people who are making such a big difference for our parks, and also express our appreciation to the volunteers and the staff, because our parks are such an important part of our community, so really appreciate the chance to say thank you. I don't know if the camera can get this, am I pointing the right direction? There we go, we're zooming in, zooming in, zooming in, straighten it up, there we go. So that's the poster, and it's also a Facebook post on the Clydesdale Creek Watershed Council, so "Soggy Day at the Park," and the only thing that has to be soggy, maybe, is our sneakers, but we still have a very dry and warm attitude, right?
That's right. So we're excited again, this Saturday, again, April 21st, starting off with an 8:00 a.m. project with Whittaker Middle School doing some of the compost, and then moving on to 10 to 2 to do our really fun day, check out our Facebook page, and it's also on the 2 Kaiser pages, so. And I'm hoping the city will be willing to put it on their city Facebook page as well, that'd be really good to help kinda promote that, so. Look forward to seeing y'all out there.
We will get that shared out, yes? Okay. Any questions or comments for Matt? We'll see you Saturday.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. That is it for Committee Reports. Am I right? The rest are all under public testimony. Are you doing Parks? Okay, Donna Bradley is here for Parks. Okay, didn't miss it, all right. Good to see you.
Hello.
I thought it was on the agenda, I didn't even look, sorry. We had our Parks meeting. The chair's not as high as it could be. Do you know who I am? Donna Bradley, I'm reporting for the Parks Board, Parks Advisory Board. We had our meeting on April 10th, and we had a good attendance. We talked a lot about some of the stuff that we have been able to accomplish in the parks so far this year, in and around the rainstorms. The park staff has been able to get out and mow all the parks twice, even in the rainstorms, although some of them are getting a little out of hand right now. As soon as they get a dry day, they're gonna be hard at it again. One of the things that we did at the previous meeting was that we, each of the Parks Advisory Board members took two parks for them to kind of oversee, and we're gonna have a regular reporting at every meeting of at least half of them. So this meeting was the first reporting meeting, and Kat Gayner looked at Meadows and looked at Clear Creek, noticed there was a big stack of branches to be taken care of at Clear Creek, somebody apparently had gone around and gathered up some of the branches that blew over and put them in a stack for us, so the team will get together and get that taken care of. She also mentioned the mowing, but like, you know, no rain, no mow. I am in charge of the PFC Ryan J. Hill Memorial Park and the Northridge Park. Lucky me, I picked one and the other one picked me. Northridge is a wilderness area, continues to be a wilderness area, will always be a wilderness area. Wasn't discussed in that meeting, but as I was reading the minutes, I was thinking, perhaps at some point, we might put up a sign stating that it is a wilderness area so that people understand why it's not being made into a regular park. But anyway, that was just a thought that fleeted through my mind. Brian J. Hill Memorial doesn't need any work, but it is nice to see the trees that got planted, so that was, that was very nice. Kaiser Little League, of course, is the all-star. They have really accomplished a lot with the benefit of grants from the Parks Board and some other income. They said that they are in the black, that their concession stand is making money hand over fist, so they're pretty happy about that. You got all those hungry kids. Yeah. They also talked about the fact that they have many tournaments signed up for this year, which will be a good income, not just for the Little League, but also for the surrounding city. You know, people buy hamburgers and they go shopping for whatever, so we're excited about that. They're getting ready to put up some, continuing to work on the lights, hopefully after the, all the storm calms down and things get drier, they could do that. They're also working on improving the drainage. Apparently, there's been a problem with the way the road slants, and it just kinda pours into the fields. They already have dug a little bit of culverting, and they're gonna continue to work on that. What else? Matt talked about Chalmers Jones and the assistance of the cleanup around the City Hall. Everybody came out and had a good time and got a lot of work accomplished. Youth that are using the skate park are thrilled with the improvements that have been made, and they're actually enjoying using the facilities again without fear of breaking a leg. We noticed that the gazebo needs a good power washing, and probably after that, some paint, but all in good time. Bob Newton has some grass in the horseshoe areas, that'll be taken care of. They need the wood chips redistributed, and the tennis courts need to be cleaned. Now, in the staff report, Roberts mentioned that they're gonna resurface those tennis courts this year, so we will try and get it spray-washed, at least so people can use them a little bit, and then hopefully get them resurfaced for the summer, summertime. Robert also reported that there has been very minimal storm damage this year, which is a blessing compared to where we were last year, where trees are falling down everywhere. Talked about the tree planting at the Ryan J. Hill Park, and the fact that we've been able to purchase two new lawn mowers, as well as trailers, to haul them in and store them in, so they're covered trailers. So that's a plus, we don't have to load and unload and load and unload. He said every park's been mowed twice, in and around all of the showers. And the Legal Department is currently working on updating the park rules, and when they have those ready, they will hopefully bring them to us prior to next meeting so that the Board can look at them. Counselor Herrera said that there is some concern around the burning that's going to occur, probably not in April at this point, unless we're gonna really torch those babies. The people who live around the park, especially, I'm assuming 15th Street, are very concerned about the ash and the smoke, and that you guys had already brought that to a work session, Budget Committee will meet on the 1st, the 3rd, and the 10th, if anybody's interested in setting in. They should definitely participate from not just the council, but citizenry. They need to see where our money's coming from and going to. Our Youth Committee liaison was not present. I spoke to the, under other business, I spoke with the Parks Board about the Parks Foundation having received a grant for $500 specified for the dog park. Now, we don't have any, didn't off of the top of our heads have any ideas about the dog park, but I wanted to make sure that people knew, in case they do have an idea, that they should bring it forward to the Parks Board meeting. And the Parks Foundation has an application form for grant on their website, people can fill out, fill it out, but they should bring it to the Parks Board meeting, because we wanna work in conjunction with the city to make sure that any projects that are going on are gonna work for what we need to have them do. So that's how we decided to make that a symbolic movement, allowing the requests for money and getting the approval of the city at the same time. And that's about all I had for the Parks Board. Any questions? All right, fabulous. What I love hearing is that we are getting stuff done. Yes. We are all thrilled. Yeah. Well, we'll see what we can get to, or hopefully the mower will be working, and it's a very nice change, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that with the Parks Fee, we can take care of business. Well, and I think that the public, the citizens, are going to see a big change. We're already moving forward, and it's early in the year yet. They're gonna see a huge change up at Little League, though. The fields up there are in better shape than they have ever been, ever, ever, and the tournament people are thrilled, so they're knocking on the door saying, "We need a weekend, we need a weekend," and so, that's good, too. Yes, kids outside playing, that's all good. You betcha. All right, any other, any questions? Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you repeat the night of the budget meeting? I missed that.
Oh, yes, May 1st, 3rd, and 10th.
Not at our budget, it's not a separate park discussion.
3rd, 10th.
I thought it was a park discussion, thank you.
Yep.
Didn't miss, wanna miss it.
I can relate. All right, great, thank you so much. Anybody else on Committee Reports? All right, then, that will take us then to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is on the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Annual Action Plan, so we'll take that up here shortly. But first, I'd like to invite Fire Board Director Betty Hart and Captain Dave Bauer to come on down and talk to us about the Kaiser Fire, 70 years of service. And Counselors, I would point out that we have been, at each of our seats, we have a Kaiser Fire District invitation to the reception to honor the wonderful and long-serving Kaiser Fire District. Neither of you are on the way back then. Well, at least, I'm sure Betty wasn't.
Good evening, I'm Dave and she's Betty, if anybody didn't know. We're here tonight, Madam Mayor, Counselors and staff, to invite you to the 70th anniversary of Kaiser Fire District. In 1948, there was a group of people that came together and saw a need, bought a fire truck, and they put it under an awning of Kaiser Food Lockers, which, for those that don't know, used to be where the Dutch Boys is now, or Dutch Brothers, I guess. Through the years, the community has been very supportive of the Fire District, and Fire District has always been very good with their money and with their plans and with their ability to keep up with things. 1948, there was 30 alarms. This year, there was 5,000 and almost 500 alarms. Through the years, the community has helped the Fire District build a new station, it's helped the district establish ambulance service, it's helped the district recently to get new equipment, modernized and technology, modernization technology have been the top part of fire service now, and that's what we have. We went from all volunteers and one paid chief to 30, I believe we have 34 volunteers, or 34 career staff right now, and those folks are taking care of business, and they are staying up on all of the training that's needed for the challenges of the fire service today. Most of it's emergency medical, and we've been to lots of, lots of folks in the community, and they've been happy with our abilities to provide service for them, and they've shown that in their support of the kinds of things that we need.
Thank you, Dave, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and city staff. As Dave told you, my name is Betty Hart, I'm a member of the Kaiser Fire Board, and there are two other members of our committee with us tonight, Donna Bradley, who's gonna make a request to you, and Colleen Bush, who is a member of the Transit Board and a member of the Kaiser Fire District Budget Committee, and they've been instrumental in helping us plan all of our upcoming events. Our specific reason to be here tonight is to invite you to our reception on Monday, May 14th, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Kaiser Fire Station, and we'll have some old and new equipment and some memorabilia and some former volunteer and career staff. We're really thrilled as well to serve as the Grand Marshal for the Kaiser Iris Festival Parade on the 19th, so I suspect many of you will be there, probably in the parade, but hopefully you'll get to see. Dave has done a great job in rounding up some people to participate in that. And we wanna remind you, of course, about the Pancake Breakfast on Mother's Day from 7:30 to 11:30. It's a really inexpensive way to take your, the mother and your family out to breakfast. And so, we look forward to seeing you on the 14th and on the 19th, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
I actually have just a real quick question. You mentioned two statistics, 30 calls, 5,000-plus calls. I'm assuming that the 30 calls initially were almost all fire calls, because we didn't do any medical. How many, how many fire calls do we do now, and how does that compare to then?
Well, there are probably fewer than 100 fire calls a year. There are a number of calls that we get every month that, which, that are counted in that statistic of 5,400-plus, that are either where we don't transport anybody, or they're called back, you know, so they don't need to help. Often, they're for service, you know, help somebody up off the floor that can't get up on their own, that kind of thing, but probably close, pretty close to 5,000 medical calls, I would think.
That's, that's an amazing number.
It is, an amazing number.
Just a side note for that, I think everybody here can remember the TV show Emergency with Johnny DeCage and Roy DeSoto. In the fire service nationally, nationally, when that show started, people starting, started calling for emergency medical. Before that, and I lived on River Road, one of its two lanes and gravel, and before that, whenever we got hurt, Mom would take us down to the doctor, we didn't go to the hospital. Since that show, everybody gets transported. Everybody thinks, and rightly so in some cases, well, they figure about 8% or 10% of the cases are really Code Three-type cases, but, but everybody decided that they needed a ride to go to the emergency room, so, just a side light.
It was a game changer. All right, any other questions? And we did cancel our work session for that night so we can join in the celebration, and we thank you so much for coming tonight, and we want to express our appreciation and thanks for the service of all of the staff and volunteers of Kaiser Fire District. Thank you. Donna, do you wanna come down and, and, Colleen, did you want to join her, or is this, okay?
Okay, so, I've been in touch with Nate's office and a couple, oh, sorry, a couple of other people, but I thought since I was here, I'd just ask whoever, and then maybe I can get the answer.
Or whoever.
We're gonna put a banner up, and I found out the size that's required. We're gonna put it up in the city, we call it the city square, we call it the focal point, what is it? On the corner of Shamawa and River Road?
How's your corner?
McGee Newton Park, yes.
That's what I thought.
Well, that's true, it has a name.
It is McGee Park?
Newton.
McGee Newton Plaza, that's what it is, yeah.
Okay, well, that's where we wanna put the banner, and I found out that there are some holes already in the cement. What I don't know is, do we have to supply the poles? Do we do the setting up ourselves, or does city? So that's kind of out in the, it's your turn.
So, yeah, it's just the receiving sleeves are in the ground, so you would need to supply the poles.
And whatever kind of rope or whatever that...
Yeah, actually, you might confer with Clint Holland, he has, that's, that's what he uses to make those announcements.
Okay, great, I will do that, thank you, thank you for that insight. So we're in the process of getting the banner made, we're gonna use it in two places, we're gonna hang it there, and then it's also gonna be in the parade. So as it's hanging at the McGee whatever place, thank you, it will also have the dates of the reception, a public reception, people are invited to come and see some of the memorabilia, have some refreshments, talk to some of the volunteers that have been around for a long time, like, you know, Dave over there. So we're, you know, we're excited about that, we hope that some of you will be able to join in that, too. So I've been taking care of getting that banner and getting it up, set it, set up, and a couple of other things. Very, very excited to be part of this group, I think it's an excellent celebration for this city. They were here before we were here, and we wanna show them, you know, the roots of this city are really with the Fire District, so.
So I have a question, and the folks from the Iris Festival are here, will this overlap with putting a banner at that corner for the Iris Festival? All right, we're gonna collaborate on that, that works.
I didn't know those poles were available, so.
So now you know the poles are available, so there we go. It makes it much easier, we didn't, that way, we're not poking holes in the grass all the way up and down the slope.
Holders are available.
So the holders are there, so you just, yeah, the holder's...
The sleeves are in the ground, you make a sign and stick it in.
Right, so they're all, this one size fits all.
The sign has to be six by seven.
Yep. All right, okay, so it's standardized now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Until we have your approval to do this, correct?
So I'd like to invite Daniel Ren to come on down, and you are a candidate for one of our judicial offices, so please introduce yourself, and, yeah, the chair can be raised up.
All right. Makes me feel like I'm a child at school with it. Well, first of all, Madam Mayor, council members and city staff, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Dan Ren, and I'm running for Marion County Circuit Court, Position 5. It's an open seat here in Marion County that needs to be filled. I wanted to let you guys know a little bit about me, I grew up here in Salem, actually, I just reconnected with Mr. Herrera, he knows my parents from Kaiser Little League days. I actually grew up in Salem, but my parents were really involved in Little League and umpiring, and they were part of what's called District 7, I don't know if you guys know, that's kind of the overall board here for Little League. But I grew up on those Little League fields, and I've known Mr. Herrera for a long time, and actually, I heard people talking about Harry Pease, my parents, that's, they umpired together for years, so it's kind of like I'm just remembering a bunch of people that I haven't seen in a long time. But, so I've lived in Salem my whole life, I grew up here, went to school here, I graduated from South Salem High School in 1989, and then I went to Alamo University for my undergraduate and law school, both. My parents, they, we grew up in South Salem, but I also am raising my family in Salem as well. I have three children, I have a daughter that's at, she's at Oregon State now, she's a sophomore, and then I have a sophomore in high school at South and a seventh grader at Leslie Middle School. So a lot of people ask me, you know, "Why are you running for judge, what's going on?" And really, it's just because that's kind of who I am, that's what I was brought up doing, was to serve my community. It's also because this community is important to me, Marion County's my home, and this is, I wanna make sure that it's the best place that it can be. So after law school, I started my own law practice, and I worked at that for about 10 years. The primary focus of my practice was helping children and families that had been involved in the juvenile justice system, so that would be when DHS gets involved, or when youth offenders commit crimes, that they need representation to kind of help get them back on the right track. I'm also really proud of the fact that I worked with, I don't know if you guys have heard of the Marion County Veterans Treatment Court? I was one of the team members that helped organize that and get it off the ground, I was representing the veterans that came into the court, and we were just looking at different ways that we could get them into programming with the VA or what other treatment they needed to kind of get back on the right path after they served our country, so those were some really great things that I did as an attorney, but I really just kind of felt like there might be some more that I could give to my community, and in 2016, I accepted a full-time position. And in 2016, I accepted a full-time position as what's called a Marion County Circuit Court Judge Pro Tem. A lot of people ask me what that is, and it's really, I have all the powers of a judge, it's just I'm not an elected official, so I'm called a pro tem. And a pro, there's 13 elected positions in Marion County, and there's just too much work for those 13 positions. And so the Supreme Court has authorized the use of what's called a pro tem, and it's a, it's a yearly, it's kind of a yearly contract. So every year that has to be renewed by the, by the Supreme Court, and thankfully, it has been for the past couple of years at least. And so now I'm just, I'm running for the open seat that is vacated by Judge Day's decision not to run for reelection. So that's where that seat comes from. I currently serve at what's called the Criminal Court Annex, I'm sure that you guys are aware of that. That's where all, all criminal cases start in Marion County. I'm the person that sits on what's called in courtroom A, so I hear every arraignment. I make all the decisions about who stays in jail, who gets released, what the bail amounts are. And so really what I focus on over the last year and a half is just making sure that our community is safe by making sure the people that are supposed to be in custody remain in custody. But I've also, I also try to look out for people that are suffering from a mental health issue. That's, I don't know if you guys are, that's a huge problem. We have a lot of just mental health issues where people are not really in their right mind when they come into court and trying to figure out the best way to get them the treatment that they need. There's many studies that show that incarceration is not what's the best solution for people with a mental health issue. So I try to sort through that, there's people that need mental health, there's people that need drug treatment, and there's just some people that just need to be in jail, I mean, that's just, I mean, the reality of what it is.
Oh, one minute.
All right. So before I served at the Criminal Annex, I worked at, I worked at the downtown courthouse where I heard restraining orders, civil commitments, landlord tenants, small claims, and support enforcement, those types of cases. And I did that for about four months before I moved to the Annex. So, so basically, I'm trying to get the seat for the work that I've been doing for the last year and a half, anyway. So thank you again for allowing me an opportunity to speak, I really appreciate it. I want to thank you all for what you do for our community. I, I've been out to a bunch of city council meetings since I've been running. I've never been to one before, I'm 47 years old, and I've never been to a city council meeting, and there's lots of good work that happens here, and I, quite frankly, I just never knew what that was. So I appreciate what you guys do for us, too. Does anybody have any questions for me about what I'm doing, or any questions about my position?
All right, thank you very much, Councilor Herrera?
Welcome again.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. I will, I will, I'll just say one thing about Claire and Karen, who I had the honor of serving with, your parents, for eight years on District Seven Board. And boy, you will not find more dedicated people than his parents and his sisters, too, both of them. So they were always there.
Thank you very much for saying that.
I thought I told that name because I happen to know a young man, but.
Great.
Thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much, and if people want to get ahold of you, you have a website or Facebook page?
I'll leave some information on the back before we leave, I'll stick around if anybody has any questions, too, so.
All right, thank you very much. So, since we're, let's go back to parties, we talked about Fire District, so let's talk Iris Festival. So we have Danielle Bethel, Dave Wallery, and Scott White to talk to us about.
What are they running for?
They are running for. They're running for good times.
Good times.
I'll just sit low.
Yeah, you can lift the chair.
I don't care, I can just, no, I don't have to do it, I don't want to fuss with it, we're not gonna be here that long.
Where's your green shirt, Dave?
I can talk louder.
I know, you kind of coordinated anyway.
Oh, there you go, see, my friends in low places.
Did you get the memo, or what?
Did you get the memo, green shirt?
Yeah.
All right.
I am Dave Wallery.
Scott White.
I'm Danielle Bethel, Kaiser resident and the Director of the Kaiser Chamber.
Take it away.
Okay, every year I come and go, what do you want to know? Iris Festival's in like five weeks, I think 32 days I counted on the calendar today, which kind of freaked me out. So Iris Festival's right around the corner, we've submitted our permits, and we've been meeting regularly. Actually, every week on Thursday, we have a meeting open to the public at the Chamber. It's listed on our calendar, and we send it out in Facebook announcements. We have received our permits from OLCC. We've worked with the Police Department regularly, Trevor comes, Officer Winning comes pretty regularly to our meetings, at least twice a month. We've had some great public input from Kaiser residents and businesses. And so far, nothing is changing from last year's model. We've established different relationships with some of the businesses on River Road, some good and some bad, mostly good. Kim, I forget her last name, Strand, she owns PGN, which is neighbors right to where the Iris Festival is. She's come back to the table and is a great partner of the Iris Festival this year in supporting us in parking and other activities, as well as advertising. We have a lot more advertisement out this year that we have had in years past, as far as posters. I brought one, it's just a, it's at print right now, so I'll pass it around in a second, so you can all see it. If you live in McNary Estates, you'll see it in your April newsletter, because we did an insert, and then we're doing one again in May, that will help them know that there'll be traffic coming through the estates for pass-through, because we do shut down Lock Haven, and they can't get out, and sometimes they forget. But that's mostly just informational. We have a great lineup of bands, I can't wait. And I'm hoping that all the rain in April means it will be dry in May. Otherwise, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much, we have a couple of things on the agenda tonight that will deal with some of the vendor and the signage. So we'll be handling those under a committee or administrative action, and Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
You might know what this question is about, it's about signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I love signs.
So, last council meeting, we had some guests who own a business on Cherry Avenue, come in and say a few things, and we listened. But one of the things that, that we kind of concluded to when they, when they left was, was some signage that kind of listed their businesses being open. Now, is that something that, have you talked to them since, have you done anything? I mean, what's, what's kind of like gonna be the final thing here?
There's not really a lot of open dialogue, to be honest, with us and them, it's not wanted on one side. They did come to the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce Iris Festival meeting the week prior to coming to City Council. And it was our understanding, as well as Nate Brown's understanding, city staff and Officer Winning, that we left that meeting on good terms with options that they were happy with. So we were surprised to hear that they came on Monday, two weeks ago. But nonetheless, what we committed to then, and what we have already put into play, is the reader board sign that's on the south side of Cherry Avenue, closest to Alder, will read "No Through Traffic, Businesses Open," and it will continuously flash. That way, we can't put all the businesses on there, otherwise the information that "No Through Traffic" will not be presented to active traffic. Because of city sign code, we can't put anything on the south side of that sign. There was some suggestions around the table about putting up Afrikan signs and that type of thing. But to be honest, to try to manage that, as far as those getting moved around, and then then potentially getting in the way of bike paths and cars, we're not gonna do that. We have taken out an ad in the Kaiser Iris Guide that talks about businesses and that they'll be open. We also have a banner being produced that would be put up at the Iris Festival tent. And then we have other various things going out in social media and so forth, talking about how those businesses will maintain their regular business hours, and thanking them. Yeah, this poster thanks Cherry Avenue Businesses for their support. And we do actually have several businesses on Cherry Avenue that are sponsors of the Iris Festival. So I think we're doing pretty well. No, it's okay.
The thing we want to stress is the street is not technically closed. You can drive all the way down, turn around, come back, take care of your business at these businesses, and they're all gonna be open. So we're not shutting the street down, there's just "No Through Traffic" to go through to.
Understood.
Some of the suggestions that I had made to the business owner when he was present is that I would produce some posters to place in his business prior to the festival, notifying his customers. And he wasn't interested in that. You know, so I, I feel pretty confident that we've done our due diligence to work a relationship with him. The conversation is open for dialogue, if he's interested in coming back to the table. I've worked with Nate on sign codes to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and he was pretty happy with what we had presented after hearing from him at City Council two weeks ago. So unless you want something additional, we do want to work with all of our businesses. The three of us will be meeting all of those business owners face-to-face over the next two weeks. Last year, Dave and Scott visited all those business owners and provided them tickets to come to the tent for dinner or lunch or something of that kind, to build that rapport. It's, you know, unfortunately, we can't make everybody happy all the time, but we are trying.
Understood, no, you've done your, that was a great answer to my question, thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is not for the agenda item yet, but I thought I'd bring it up while Danielle and Chamber are there. Excuse my voice here, a little allergies tonight. The staff report and the exhibit on the resolution, the impression that staff got from council last minute, last meeting is that council wanted the businesses listed. So the condition reads, shall install a temporary sign, indicate, listing the businesses north of the sign, indicating the access to the businesses is allowed. The Chamber shall work directly with the affected businesses, the Police Department of Public Works, regarding the content and placement of the sign. So if the council wants to do something different than that, if that, if listing all the businesses isn't something the Chamber wants to do and something that the council doesn't want to require, then at that, at that time in the agenda, you'd want to change that. But I want to make sure that everyone was aware of that if they didn't get a chance to read that part of the packet.
So on listing the businesses, how many are we talking?
Well, there's 14-plus businesses in that area of River Road, or, excuse me, Cherry Avenue, and not all of them are open. So, I mean, we're happy, again, we're, we're putting up a banner that lists all of them. And the flashing sign, and maybe Chief T can speak to this, but Sergeant Winning has gone through it and looked at characters and things of that nature, and he feels it's the safest to just manage that sign in the traffic. It flashes, it's the brightest, that's what people are gonna notice, and it's not sufficient to put business, all those businesses on there.
So, but the banner is gonna be at the tent, is it possible to put it near the, near that space to hang it someplace?
If we can get one of the businesses to comply.
Somebody that owns the PGN, something like that?
Well, that's already down by the Iris, she's looking closer to Alder.
Yeah, the west side.
Before Alder, okay.
Yeah.
The thing we could do.
Microphone.
The thing we could do, at the most, is basically your easel behind you, folks, right there. We could make an easel-type of sign like that, if that's possible, if that's what we need to do, and list the businesses, but the wording isn't gonna be much bigger than short-term goals, if you've, if that's worth our while to do that, if we feel we need, if you feel we need to do that.
But where would we put that sign?
I, see, that's what I don't know, it would, because it would have to be right at the front of the intersection of where the sign says, "Street, No Through Traffic," right there, in.
I went down on Friday with my staff, and we walked in different areas to see if we put up a banner-type sign on Alder and Cherry, if it would hinder traffic, visuals of traffic, because a lot of traffic comes down and around Iris Festival and comes out Alder, and it would hinder looking right. I have a call-in to Bymark to see if they'd be interested in helping us potentially put up a sign in their area. But again, people aren't gonna see that coming north on Cherry, they're only gonna see if they're coming down Alder. We're not trying to be difficult, but we're also trying to say that that might not be possible long-term for the best visual of cars.
Also, in the years past, it said, "Closed to," or "No Through Traffic," which made it sound like it was.
I think it said, "Road Closed, No Through Traffic."
Which made it sound like there wasn't anything. So I think this year, by the simple suggestion of the gentleman that came in and had his concern, was, let's change the wording to "Open to Through Traffic, Businesses Open." So with those two things flashing, it's very clear now that the road is open and the businesses are open also.
If we put too many figures up there, you're not gonna be able to read it, anyway. I mean, it's, I mean, it clicks, then it clicks, and then, you know, so you'd be, have a lot of clicks up there if we're gonna try to list, and I don't think the thing will accept 14 businesses, I don't even know if it'll accept five businesses.
No, the, there's, there's specific requirements about how many characters can be read. And the Police Department is well aware of those, and I think they're working on that specific. I think, and just for council, just so you know, you have the authority under the permit process for a special event permit to grant whatever signage you think is appropriate. So, so the, the sign code doesn't necessarily apply to what we're, what the council's trying to weigh in on. They have the authority, they have the ultimate authority.
Yes, I definitely knew that. Mostly my concern is, is I don't want to put up a banner down in an area that's already congested with traffic and people who literally turn around in the middle of the road when they get that far, because they're not paying attention. With the number of pedestrians that we bring to that community in a short period of time, I know that it seems chaotic, but this is the 39th year of this festival, and this is the fourth year that it's been in this location. So most folks are accustomed to it, it is a little hindering, and again, we're happy to pre-educate the customers of those businesses with signage in their facilities if they want it, which I think will help prevent what we're talking about if they just know in advance.
Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so just a point of clarity and a suggestion. I think Scott, you said, open, or local, open through traffic, it's not, it's local access only, right? Just because we turn around, thank you. And so I don't think we had in previous years, businesses open. We never had that before, so that's already a step in the right direction to make, you know, local businesses. I did walk through there after he came, just to kind of get a perspective, because I thought pronto signs was a totally different area, and they're even farther down. So I'm just wondering, based on sign codes of, with the city, can, can a business hire a sign waiver to stand and say, you know, business open? That's legal, right? So we can, I'm just saying, because it's not a normal, they're not in front of their business, so I just want to make sure before we suggest it that's legal, because.
We did suggest that to them.
And, and I understand that, I'm just thinking if we're, it makes it simple, and that's their choice, whether they choose to do that or not, I just want to make sure it was an option, so.
Counselor Freeman, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, so will you guys, I've had a conversation with Dave. Full disclosure, my husband had a conversation with Danielle this morning. My husband's a trustee at the Kaiser Elks Lodge, and in your memo, under Event Parking, it says Parking will be available at the Kaiser Elks Lodge. I know this is not open to the public, that you have to truly be an Elks member, but because this is a public document, I would like it to be stated from you guys, and so everyone knows that Parking is available at the Elks Lodge at certain times, right? Which is, I believe, Thursday at lunch and Friday morning for greeters. Any other parking on the Kaiser Elks Lodge, you have to be a member, and you do have to show your member card. Okay, I just want to make sure, since, I would hate for someone to see this and then think that they're coming to the Kaiser Elks Lodge and they can park there if they're a non-member, so.
Really be my hope that people look at the advertising that we put out in the community, where it specifically states where Parking is available, and we'll make sure that we note that for the Elks Lodge, just that way it helps this year.
And we'll correct that next year.
No problem, thank you. I knew, but I just, again, for making sure everyone is aware of exactly what's happening.
Bringing that up.
Thank you.
So dusting greeters and the lunch, the sponsor lunch? Okay, okay, so we'll make that amendment.
And then for Parking, what's different this year, too, is that we're, we'll be advertising it a lot more, because it will be available on Cherry Avenue, but then Kim Strand at PGN will also be selling Parking for $3 a day to whoever wants to park there. So we'll be advertising that, so folks know that they can come down and park there, as well.
Yes. Oh, and then, sorry, it was Counselor Anderson, then you, Counselor Anderson?
Did you have something? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I lost track, because I was writing, making notes on this.
Well, first of all, thank you guys so much for, you know, I don't even want to begin to comprehend the level of work that goes into these, planning these things and all of the moving parts that you all have there. So appreciate that, and just the hard work that you guys and your volunteers are, are doing on this. Can you, I've got one question and then just a comment. Can you restate what this sign, the new sign is going to be saying?
So.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, as of last week, when I talked to Sergeant Winning, we had settled on "No Through Traffic, Businesses Open." And the reason for that is, is because they cannot technically go all the way down Cherry Avenue, but it does allow people to understand that traffic is allowed.
I mean, just, the comment is, is, I would, second what you're saying, I would also be concerned about clutter. Where are you gonna put it? I mean, are we talking, is it gonna go on the sidewalk, the median, where the heck could it possibly go?
Highway Reader Board, sorry.
No, no, I'm talking about that, if we start listing out on, on separate signs or banners or whatever, I'm not exactly clear on where you would do that, so it doesn't clutter up something without, you know, asking somebody for permission to be able to post that. So I, I'm personally am satisfied with the explanation, I, I think it really makes a lot of sense, and especially the way that that's been rephrased, and especially with the line of sight, too, that folks can see. Because I drove down Cherry Avenue on the way over here tonight. the way over here tonight, and it's pretty clear where certain businesses are located, and that you can see them from Alder on Cherry. So, anyway, but I, you know, so I'm personally satisfied with the, what you all came up with, so thanks.
Thank you.
Just, just a quick comment, I, I'm disappointed that they chose not to take advantage of the pre-education of their customers in advance of the festival, I suggested that when they were here and confirmed that they only receive about ten new customers, you know, a day versus the vast majority of their customers being redos daily or weekly, and they could severely mitigate any negative impacts if they would take advantage of that, so I appreciate you offering that.
And we're not done offering. So, we're going to do some signage and some stuff, if they want to take advantage of it, anybody wants to take advantage of it, it's open, it's available to any, anyone along Cherry Avenue.
Something to, to recommend to them also, just based on the line of sight, since, since those businesses are so visible from, you know, where the, where the sign, where the sign says no through traffic, is if they put out an A-frame that just said, open, at the sidewalk level, it would clearly tell people that they're open, so, and you would be able to see that from, so, anyway, just something, something else to suggest.
Yeah, absolutely. There's definitely more people walking down that sidewalk during that weekend than any other weekend, so, a lot of exposure.
So, I've questioned, and maybe this is a better one for the chief, what's more effective, no through traffic or local access only? One's in the negative, one's in the affirmative?
Yeah, so I'm reading an email here from Trevor, and he says local access only.
Okay.
But I, I just want to add that we do need to be careful about putting so much signage there that we cause a distraction for drivers. This topic has been talked about and talked about and talked about, and we need to make sure we keep our pedestrians safe above everything else.
Okay, so we'll be looking at local access only, businesses open. Boom. Whatever he wants, all right.
I guarantee you Trevor's going to make the right decision, and so.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, but in the affirmative, all right, thank you. Any other questions on this, or anything else related to the Iris Festival?
I did want to add one last thing, because it just came to my mind, this year, I don't know if you were able to attend Iris Festival last year on Sunday, Sunday's always been a hard day to draw folks down to the festival, kind of close out the festival, so we brought down a group from Portland, it was students who performed, similar to how we have the bands, and we paid them, and at the end of the festival last year, we got together and thought, well, why wouldn't we just pay our local students to do the same thing? So, for the first time, I think in Kaiser Fest history, we're hosting a local competition for sixth graders through twelfth graders that are Salem Kaiser Public students, and right now, we're taking video submissions of musical talent at talent@kaiserchamber.com, and we've received several that are very amazing, very talented kids, of course, mostly McNary, because Mr. Rist is running this program for us, and after May first, once the submissions come in, there'll be a panel of specialists or experts that are going to pick some students that come to the festival on Sunday afternoon for round two to perform, and then they'll go to a round three that afternoon, and there'll be three prizes, first place is a thousand dollars, second place is seven hundred dollars, and third place is four hundred dollars. And Uptown Music stepped up to help us cover a bulk of that cost, so if you have something to look forward to after church on that Sunday, I would encourage you to come down and check these students out. It is open to homeschooled students as well, I'm still figuring out the details of how to get them through their local school director, because that's who's helping us verify that they're local Salem Kaiser students, but nonetheless, it is available, we've had a couple of calls on that. I'm very excited for this event, if you, really, you should come down, so.
Do you have some talented individuals that's on your mind right now?
Yeah, the videos are on Facebook as far as the announcements of recruiting, and we'd love to see that get around throughout our whole district and see who we can bring in from our local community.
Is that, have you shared that with the, was it Celtic News?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I figured you had.
Yeah, and Mr. Thomas at Whittaker blasted it out through like three emails over the last week, and it's, it's starting to gain some traction. I think high school and middle school students wait till the last second to do anything, I have two, so I can vouch for that, so we'll probably get all their submissions on the day of the deadline, which is May first.
Fabulous. Well, thank you for showcasing our students, because I, I agree with you, they're absolutely fabulously talented, as the art show just outside the door here would also vouch for.
Yeah.
So, all right, well, thank you for all the work you're putting into this, and we'll see you at Iris Festival.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howell, you are up.
What? It's nothing bad, I promise.
It's, it's very, it's very specific, it says other.
Other, right?
Take his picture. We got it.
Good evening, my name is Eric Howell, I live in Kaiser. Let's back off a little bit. I am here tonight because on Friday, April twenty-seventh, the residents of Kaiser have a very important decision to make, they can either go and watch people in long underwear, beat each other up on the big screen, or, in this little movie called Avengers that's coming out that day, or you can come to McNary for free, and we will keep you entertained for probably the better part of two hours with students sharing their original works and writings, and possibly songs and other things of that nature. This will be our third annual Word Slam, this is a function that I do as a volunteer at McNary through the McNary Write Club, and every year, I bring in students and we produce a book of their work, and this is a way for us to kind of put them out in front of the community, for the kids to summon up their courage and prove that they're willing to stand behind what they write. So, it begins at seven PM on April twenty-seventh, we invite you all to come and join us, we'd love to see you there, it is so much fun. It sounds, you know, like a board, but I promise you, we keep it interesting, and the kids are fantastic, so, any questions?
That is fabulous, so, this is the third year.
Third year. Been doing the Write Club for seven years, but this is our third year doing the Word Slam, so.
Counselor Reed?
I'm really excited about this, and the kids are really excited about this, I do want to say that I've had a couple of excuses, I couldn't get my essay done, because I'm working on my, my Write Club submission.
Well, I have a bone to pick with you, because one of the students came to me and said, you said something about, don't you want to do your real writing first? Talking about their homework assignments, when they could have been in club with me doing the fun stuff, but that's.
I would never say that, but.
You're saying that there's votes on the table.
Fair enough. But overall, thank you, you know, these kids are very excited about this, they're, there's not a whole lot of opportunity for, for them to show off their creativity writing, you know, they, they have the visual arts here, and, you know, they, they have a creative writing class, but your Write Club kids get really excited about, they're really proud of having published in, in the Write, in the Write Club, and it's just a really excellent outlet for these kids, and thank you very much for.
The Write Club has been a really, it's, you know, the shining part of my week, to be honest, but the, the Word Slams are just a lot of fun, like, we had, it was the first year, we had like fifteen people, and five of them were my family, and, you know, the family of the kids. Last year, I don't know what happened, we had forty people, so, and we had a blast, and, and please come and share the moment with us, and, you know, if you want to go see Avengers, I looked, there's a ten forty showing downtown, you know, I, I might be there, too. I'm, I'm hoping to be done by ten.
Thursday night for the, for the opening, isn't it?
Well, Friday, I think, is like the official opening, but, you know, they had to expand it, so they get more box office, and, you know, whatever. And you see, you know, it's people in tights beating each other up, come on, you've seen that before. These are kids writing and sharing it, so.
You never get enough of them.
And we're going to let you in for free, and you're probably going to get a free soda, and probably cookies, you know, it's, it's, it's a good time.
I might, I might suggest that you ask the newspaper if they would publish this?
You've done, they've done that, actually, yeah, at my, someone's behest, I'm not sure. I think, I think I might have wrote it.
Really, wrote it?
Yeah.
And where at McNary is this?
This will be in the choir room, and we begin at seven PM on Friday, April twenty-seventh, please come and join us.
Yes, for sure.
All right, any questions, Counselor Herrera?
Could you, could you repeat the name of the, the event, Eric, please, one more time?
So, this is, the event title is Outlet, but it is our annual Word Slam, which, think beatnik poetry slam with fewer rules. We do short stories, essays, it's not just poetry, but we do get a lot of poetry, too, and have fantastic writers, not going to lie.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's on my calendar. All right, that is everybody I have signed up for public, for public testimony, is there anybody else who would like to speak now, I, or go into our public hearing? All right, then let's go ahead, and I will open a public hearing for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Annual Action Plan, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, one second here. Who am I going to, Nate?
And then we'll invite down.
Shannon? Counselor Johnson, if you would.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. The annual action plan is before you, as, you know, there's a five-year plan, but that came a few years ago, then there's an annual action plan that comes from Salem, who manages the joint program with Kaiser and Salem. So, that document, draft document is before you, Salem has the review period open until April twentieth, I believe, and so tonight is the opportunity for public comment, we started doing this a few years ago, so that it was clear that if anybody, so we, we advertise it as a public hearing, so that people want to comment on it, because Salem does run that for our jurisdiction also. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions on the staff report? I would like to invite down Shelley Inger, did I say it right?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, right, from the City of Salem, and thank you so much for joining us tonight, we were really glad to have you here.
I do appreciate the opportunity to come, and I will say that Nate has been very helpful in making sure that the public hearing was scheduled this evening, as well as his staff, whenever I have a question, I know that's the first place for me to come, so I want to express my appreciation to him, and we do do this in a joint, the home portion in the consortium with the City of Kaiser.
We really appreciate that, I think we get a lot more mileage out of the dollars through that. We, we have the entire report in our packet, and some of us have also been sharing it out, so the public hearing, if people want to send comments, it is open through tomorrow.
The twentieth, April the twentieth, which is Friday.
Sixteenth, so at the end of this week, so people still have time to read it and weigh in, so are there some things that you'd like to highlight for folks who are watching, or who haven't finished reading the whole document?
Certainly, I'd love to highlight, I'd like to, first of all, tell you some of the things that have happened in Kaiser with those resources in the past couple of years. You have a project named Saint Monica, that's in the process of being constructed, it was the former Apple Blossom Project that was in poor condition, Catholic Community Services is the partner with the city, as well as City of Salem, in reconstructing that apartment community, I had the opportunity to go in a couple of weeks ago, and it's near completion, I think they're going to start lease up soon, and I don't want to speak on behalf of Catholic Community Services, but they've done a wonderful job, it's also going to have some supportive services there on site, and I think that that's a wonderful addition. In addition to that, there were some resources for River Park, which is located on the other side of River Road, if you, I know they partner with the city in regards to the beautiful landscaping that was done, and the city put in the sidewalks and some of the other accoutrements, and the City of Salem, through your home funds, and I say your home funds, we were able to go in and put in new roofs, be able to paint the property, put in new pavement for the apartment community, and it's to sustain it. As you know, there's a terrible housing shortage, and part of that is preservation, and so we want to preserve those existing affordable housing opportunities, but also continue to construct new. The Community Services and Housing Commission, you have had a wonderful representative, Kurt McCormick, serving on that position, Mr. McCormick resigned for personal reasons this year, and as in the conversation with Mayor Clark, she's going to help us, as, as well as we're asking other councilors, if you have some recommendations, because this person must live in the City of Kaiser, because it is a representative of the City of Kaiser.
Could you tell us a little bit about what the, the time commitment would be for someone who is going to serve on this committee or commission?
Yes, ma'am, wonderful question. The CSHC, or Community Services and Housing Commission, meets once a month, from three PM to five PM, the commission consists of nine individuals, as I said, this position is dedicated to someone who is a resident of Kaiser, we know that there are a lot of wonderful people, I saw them here tonight, who are interested in the City of Kaiser and, and making improvements, there's no specific criteria in regards to understanding what HUD programs allow for, we'll make sure you get that training, in addition to that, there are a lot of wonderful things that are going on in the City of Kaiser, you can help make sure that we're aware of those opportunities, so that we can invite individuals to come in and make testimony and help us in our planning processes, as well as making sure that when the resources are distributed, Kaiser is under consideration. This year, unfortunately, we did not have any applicants from the Kaiser area, or any developers who were looking to do affordable housing in Kaiser, and I take a, a part of that, because we want to make sure that the word is out, so I will be spending more time with Nate, his staff, and with other individuals, to try and see if we can increase this, this opportunity for Kaiser community.
We have a definite need, as you know, I, I chaired the, the steering committee for the homeless initiative through the COG, Council of Governments, and the work that the task force did, and thank you for referencing that in your report, I think that's part of a whole community-wide awareness and a determination to do meaningful work on behalf of serving people who are homeless, housing insecure, who need supportive services, and to get and stay on a track of being permanently and decently housed.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm very excited about the, the way the whole community is getting it, and really working, leaning in to get it done. So, if we can highlight more properties, we have opportunities to get some more affordable housing here in Kaiser, I know that there are people looking, I see people post on Nextdoor, on Facebook, through conversations, the community, we have a need here. Mr. Brown, it looks like you have something to say.
I just wanted to compliment the City of Salem and their management of this program, the Community Development Block Grant Program is complex, it's because we share our, we share our resources, we are able to leverage those funds, as you indicated earlier, and honestly, every time we have, you know, the question comes up, well, is Kaiser getting their, their proper share, or whatever, it's always been demonstrated that, that we do, and that the administration of the program has always been very solid and very beneficial to our community. So, this is truly a very beneficial relationship, and we are grateful for it.
Fantastic, well, thank you so much, are there any other questions, Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, you said there was no, thank you, Madam Mayor, you said there were no applicants from Kaiser this year?
That is correct, sir.
What kind of, like, advertising or, or letting people know, the public know about this, and is it done in Spanish also, and how do the people hear about this?
There are several ways that we use it, one was on the City of Salem's website, we also had postings here, in the Kaiser complex, in your, in your civic center, we, in addition to that, we sent out mailings to those who have expressed an interest, and Kurt, at that time, was also on the commission, and he was also our liaison, we also placed it on Facebook, as well as other social media, Twitter, and some other accounts, allowing individuals to know, we had public meetings or opportunities for individuals who were interested to come into our office and learn more about the program, and we are also looking for recommendations from the council in regards to how we can increase that exposure, so that persons in Kaiser will be aware of our application process.
So, we have, we have their information at our counter, and anybody that expresses concerns, we refer them directly, so we, this is different than, as you will remember, we had the Community Development Block Grant Funds that we had accumulate, that had been recycled, this is different, we managed that on our own, because the, those were funds that had already been committed, and we managed those from long ago. This is the ongoing program, and it, it, every year, the decisions have to be made about how most effective those funds can reach out into the community, and so, anyway, we, we try very hard to make sure everybody knows about it, it's, it's just one of those programs that is ongoing.
Although, that being said, creating bilingual material would be a huge benefit, I think that's something that, that may benefit the program, definitely benefit the twenty-plus percent of our population that is Spanish-speaking, so.
Yes, sir, and I thank you for that suggestion.
Yep, that'd be great. Also, with the social media and so forth, let's work on some means by which we can push that out farther. And we have, a lot of people are very active on Facebook, I'm among them, but we can talk about some strategies, perhaps on our end, that we can help get it out farther and reach some of the organizations within our community. Kaiser United, Counsel Ryan, yeah, you're already on it. We're going to get that to Kaiser United. We have Meredith Mooney, who is doing a fabulous job really bringing groups together through Kaiser United and growing the networking there, and that might be a great way to have a farther reach into our community. So if you would take that, take the information to Kaiser United, that would be great.
Absolutely.
So that's our community progress team.
Look forward to it.
And I also have a question, Madam Mayor. Thank you. First of all, thank you so much, because it's a huge need, and I'm super excited, and it takes a lot of people to make that happen, and that doesn't go unnoticed, especially for those of us behind the scenes. But I did want to say, not only Kaiser, you know, it's a great idea, but we have some local churches also that are very, very involved. Our food bank might be really a number-one source for you. And then I would even recommend making sure our officers in our police department are aware for maybe, you know, sometimes we have situations like a domestic violence situation or something like that, when they might not know that they have some resources. So if we can help with the education, maybe through, make sure our police officers are aware of it, so they could recommend it if they had the opportunity, would be my suggestion as well. Thank you again so much.
So just a word of caution, these are different than the funds that we did, that were available for individuals. And that's why our representative is so important, and we need to make sure that that is filled on that, because some decisions have to be made. There are only limited amounts of funds. And as you, as she mentioned, we are, have been working this year on getting those Apple Blossom apartments retrofitted. As you remember, they had burned, they were, it was horrendous. So this facility that is using these funds is something that's going to be a huge asset. Well, it consumed a lot of those funds as well. So those decisions have to be made on how to spend those funds to the most effect in our community. And that's why our representative is so important on that. So I think let's, let's focus on that, so we have a good voice as those decisions are made on what funds are available. So it's not like there's a pot of cash just waiting for the cops to hand it out on the street corner, that sort of thing. Those decisions have to be made well in advance.
But let people, let organizations know that if there's an opportunity to apply for, where to go look for, look for the next round of grants when they come open. And, yeah, I am totally thrilled with St. Monica's getting open here soon. What a wonderful, wonderful new facility for people to live and live safely in our community. I'm thrilled about that. I have a couple of names in mind. Counselor Freeman?
A question with that. So is that an appointment by you, the mayor, or does that actually, do we have someone that applies, and they come through the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and then it's recommended to the council? Because I guess it's been a while since we've kind of had this conversation, so maybe I'm supposed to know this, and it's, I'm looking at Nate and Shannon, and I'm like, okay, give me the sign if I'm supposed to know this. But I'm just curious.
That makes two of us.
How we.
We'll get back to you on that, specific process. I'm looking at Shannon, he's looking at me.
Because, you know, all of our other volunteers fill out an application, and they come through the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, which then is a recommendation to council. And so I'm just asking how this process works, so, thank you.
We'll, we'll find out.
Okay. And that's a way that we can broaden the scope of recruitment for folks to, who have a real interest in pursuing this and want to get involved with the policies surrounding this great program, so, all right. Are there any other questions? Thank you so much for your work, and thank you so much for coming tonight.
And I do work for the city of Kaiser as well, as I'm doing the home program, so I want you to always know that it is not just the Salem program, it is the Salem-Kaiser Consortium. Kaiser Salem. Kaiser Salem.
That's the ongoing thing we have at the school district. Is there anybody else who would like to speak as part of this public hearing on these, on this grant program? Colleen Bush, come on down.
Colleen Bush, a resident of Kaiser, just a thought process that came through here, wondering if neighborhood associations might be beneficial in this conversation.
We're getting a head nod from Shelley.
So we have three of those associations that we could have people join in with from. Okay, that's all.
That's a great idea. Thank you. So we have three neighborhood associations, and Colleen can help get that information as well as from our website for the three neighborhood associations. Great idea. All right, anybody else? Is there anything else we need for the record before we close it? City Attorney? All right, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And what is the action we need to take here? I lost track.
To direct staff to send comments to the city of Salem, if any, and to bring the final 2018, 2019.
Microphone.
I'm sorry. Annual Action Plan back to the council at its June 18th meeting for final adoption. So by consensus, is that what we need to do, Shannon?
Yes.
Okay. By consensus, to direct staff to take public comment, if any.
Okay, are we agreed?
We're agreed.
All right, we are agreed that staff will receive the, any additional comments, and we will forward them to the city of Salem. And then the final annual action plan will come back to us at our June 18th, 2018, June 18th, it says right here.
That's right, June 18th.
June 18th, okay, June 18th, 2018, what did I say? Meeting for final adoption. All right, sounds good.
And we will, we will get that process to you in an email, so you can, you can be aware of that as you're approaching this.
Okay, and then we can, the process for recruiting a representative for the, to succeed Kurt, and I want to take a moment and thank Kurt McCormick for his service on that and his work for the Kaiser Community Food Bank. He has been tireless in serving people in our community, and very much appreciate his service and his dedication. All right, that is all we have tonight for public hearings. That takes us to administrative action. Resolution 8A is authorizing temporary use and sign subject to conditions for Iris Festival 2018. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. As Danielle and the chamber members pointed out, it's on the agenda tonight. There's two separate items, actually. The first is the Iris Festival Temporary Use and Associated Signage. As I indicated earlier, this is the resolution under the Kaiser Development Code that allows the council to allow special uses and special signage for festivals and other events that we do every year. If you look in that portion of the packet, towards the end of that packet, that item is a resolution, and attached to the resolution is an exhibit, Exhibit A. Number two is the section about the sign. So I'd call your attention to that and any amendments you'd like to make to that with regard to the sign. And other than that, it's fairly routine, and I won't go through all the conditions. It allows certain signage at certain times and certain locations, and limited electronic signs, et cetera. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions on the staff report? So I have Counsel Anderson.
I'm sorry, Shannon, I was trying to flip through this. Can you point out in the Exhibit A where?
Yes, so you have Exhibit A there?
Yes.
It's number two.
Oh, okay.
And it's really probably the second sentence of number two that you might want to change from, from the discussion earlier this evening. And, and we don't really need any particular direction with regard to the verbiage. The police and the public works do that, as Chief Teague pointed out. But really, really, the only question is the issue of the businesses, I believe. And so you need to determine whether you want to list them all or some, or is the indication that they indicated that, you know, local, that business is open sufficient for council or not.
Local access-only businesses open, I think is what we talked about. Do you have that? I have one more question, and that is regarding the parking at the Elks. That was in the application. Do we need to indicate anything here that that is? I don't see it in the conditions, which is why I am not sure if we need to deal with that or if that's just something.
Really, yeah, I would, I would hesitate to open that up. We don't really, that's kind of an issue between the chamber and the Elks. This is really an issue with regard to the pla, for most part, placement of signs and types of signs, and those kind of items. I don't think that we'd want to get into any off-street parking issues.
Okay, and so that's something that, you know, we made the, the folks with the Iris Festival aware of it, so they can make sure that they're really clear with patrons of the festival when they can and cannot park there.
Aye.
Okay, so that mission's accomplished. Are we good with that? Okay. So we'll just deal with the, the one issue regarding the item 2A. Anything else that anybody wants to address before we put a motion on the table? Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, in that Section 2, listing all, listing the businesses north of the sign, how many businesses are we talking about north of the sign?
The indication that we have had is 14.
Okay, so that would be a list of 14 businesses that we, according to this, that we would?
That is one option.
Okay, so.
Or to not.
Perhaps it would be maybe more efficient to amend it to just, to say, install a temporary sign indicating that access to the business is allowed and cut out that middle part? Is that kind of what we're looking at as far as?
That certainly would be an option for council, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other comments or changes? Okay, Counsel President Parsons, do you want to put a motion on the table?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopts Resolution R. 2018, authorizing temporary use and sign subject to conditions for Iris Festival 2018, with an amendment, Exhibit A.2, change to read that there'll be a reader sign placed at Alder that will specify local access-only businesses open.
Second. It's been moved in, moved in seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, authorizing temporary use and sign subject to conditions for Iris Festival 2018 as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor, Chief Teague?
I have a question. So are we then locking us into that verbiage?
Yes.
You didn't want me to do that?
That, that would be the council one. Is that the indication is local access only?
I thought your comment a moment ago, though, was to defer to.
Well. My, my suggestion would be to defer to the expert, which is Sergeant Winning, with regard to the, the issue of the type of traffic control device, because there's specific words, local, and I believe that that's true, that it's local access only, but that's kind of up to them. I guess the question is, is the additional sign, businesses open? That would be the council's determination on whether you're just going to say businesses open, rather than the proposed language, which would be required in listing all of them. And so I, I don't think that there's a problem having the council determine businesses open in addition to whatever required signs PD comes up with.
Yeah, I don't mean to get too much in the weeds, but I'm just wondering if businesses open would fit on there. Maybe we can just add or substantially similar. Is that sufficient for you?
Yeah.
Well, somewhere close to that, say, businesses open.
Right, okay.
And I think that was the big, that was the big issue, is that the businesses there want their patrons to know that they are indeed open. So again, is that affirming language? You know, yes, that you have local access, and yes, the businesses, if this is their normal business hours, are open. So is, do we need to change the language to make our intent clear?
I, I think we're all in agreement. I think, I think that is the language that Sergeant Winning had proposed, and so I really, I really don't think we need to get too far into those weeds. It's, what, five words have to be there? I think the message is short, and I think it will all fit on the sign, so I, I think we're good.
Okay.
Honestly, if there's a minor variation, I don't think any of us are going to say, oh, wait, there's a comma or whatever.
Madam Mayor?
Comments are important.
Situations save lives, I got it, yeah.
I, I do think that the message that the council is sending, that the businesses are open, needs to fit somewhere. The exact language, I agree with the chief. If I may, Madam Mayor, I was suggesting, given what I see as the intent of the council, that first sentence read, and it's really the first sentence, I was wrong with Counsel Ryan Anderson, it's not the second sentence, the first sentence is really applicable, that the Chamber of Commerce shall place a temporary sign at Alder Drive indicating that the businesses are open, without having exact language, so not in quotes, in other words, indicating that the businesses are open in addition to any Kaiser Police Department required language. Does that, take care of that?
That's, that's my amendment.
Finally amendment for that language? Second, the second except, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just to the point, that their, their conversation was very specific, that Sergeant Winning counted out the letters and said, businesses open, local access only, and they were happy with that. And, and of course, we're, of course, discussing leaving out the list of businesses, but that was what Sergeant Winning specifically said fit and was short and sweet. So I, whatever he feels is appropriate, I don't think we need to deviate from it.
So I think that's what, so with, with the language that Shannon's suggesting that
That does, takes care of that.
That's going to take care of that? Are we all comfortable with that?
Yes.
Any other changes, discussion, amendments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, item 8B, takes a lot of work to put on a party. Resolution authorizing a temporary suspension of the ordinance prohibiting street vendors. City Manager.
Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor and Counsel, the corollary issue is the annual suspension of the street vendor ordinance. As you know, Ordinance 90-193 is an ordinance prohibiting street vendors, specifically allows a provision for suspending the regulations during the festival. And so we have prepared that resolution. That resolution clearly states that it's only between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and noon on parade day, Saturday, May 19th, 2018, and that at no time may any person interfere with, impede, or block pedestrian, vehicular, or parade traffic in any manner. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions on the staff report? Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, authorizing a temporary suspension of the ordinance prohibiting street vendors.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, authorizing a temporary suspension of the ordinance prohibiting street vendors. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to the consent calendar. Counsel President Parsons, would you please read the consent calendar for tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. There are five items on the consent calendar tonight. Item A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign dedication for Reserve Strip, which is parcel, parcel A, Donahue Park subdivision. B is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an Oregon Cooperative Procurement Program Agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services. C is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into the contract for Meadows Play Structure Replacement with Ross Recreation Equipment Company, Inc. D is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Holt Services, Inc. for rehabilitation of the city hall well. And E is approval of the April 2nd, 2018, city council regular session minutes.
Are there any polls? Seeing none, Counsel President Parsons.
I move that the city council approve items A through B.
Second. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us then to council liaison reports. Counsel Ryan, shall we start with you tonight?
You bet. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I, as many of us, attended the Rotary Dinner, which is an exciting opportunity to, to support our community, because they raised so much money. But allow me to be first on the council here to, probably not the first, but to say congratulations to Roland. I'm not going to lie, I was kind of jelly. So, congratulations, that is very exciting on your big win. Couple of things for me. Just a reminder to please check out our Kaiser art, our Kaiser kids, our Kaiser Salem Kaiser, Kaiser Salem, kids' art, fabulous, it is for sale, and they deserve the recognition, and they do a great job, and appreciate the staff support to make that happen, because it's a lot of work. Kaiser United, as I will be taking that message. Kaiser United, as I will be taking that message to them as well, we are looking for board members who are willing to serve once a month to try to help us create a stronger board that will help generate more money for our local kids. And then, I think I'll just end real quick with saying, I apologize, my email has been down. You don't even know you're missing an email until you realize, why haven't I heard from anybody? So, I apologize that I didn't get that fixed, Madam Mayor, no one, so if you didn't see my response to something, I apologize, but I was down. So, also, I would have been happy to fill in for the commissioner's breakfast because I kind of thought it was my week anyway, I was excited. Anyway, I apologize. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody's up and running. Helsa Freeman.
Well, it's been a quiet week, a lot of my committees were canceled, but we did have a great group at the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting last week, we had sixteen people and some new residents, so that's always a plus, and thank you to our speakers, which were Dylan Duran for net neutrality, and we had information presented on the Salem Kaiser School Bond, so I would just encourage everyone to educate yourself on the bond that's coming up to vote on. I appreciate both Karma Kraus and Martina Mangan, the principal at Cummings, for educating our group about it and encouraging people, again, to do research and determine how you feel about that. What was exciting, and Bill, they'll probably reach out to you, had a lot of discussion about the sidewalks around Delight and what the, what the bond will technically hopefully pay for, and then some discussion with the traffic, bikeways, pedestrians, I won't steal President Counselor Parsons' thunder, but they were talking about come September, Cummings will be a Title I school and potentially there may be some more additional funding with that on the safe route to schools. So it's promising, the group's really excited, and the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association also, if you haven't been by the school, I would encourage everyone to drive by, their sign out front has pretty pansies and some flower pots up by the door, so our group is really taking that school on to hopefully do some beautification projects as well. The planning commission meeting was canceled this month along with the volunteer coordinating committee, but we do have a couple openings still available, so we have one opening on the Kaiser Points of Interest, one on the Kaiser Festival Advisory Board, and two on public art, and the volunteer coordinating committee will not be meeting until June. We canceled the April meeting and the May meeting due to Irish Festival weekend, so we won't be meeting until June, and I know Debbie's actively recruiting, so everyone has a little more time to get their applications in. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Helsa Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, we had our Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting, and that was probably better attended than we've had, have had in a long time, and that was, again, thanks to Bob and Colleen Bush putting the signs around, I think that they're working very nicely, so that was a good conversation. Also, went to the Rotary Dinner, and I'm sure you'll, I think most of us were there, and it was, it was a lot of fun, and a lot of great people doing great things. There was a Kaiser Heritage Board meeting, and we discussed, probably the most noteworthy thing coming up there is the volunteer appreciation party, I guess, you'd call it a party, it's a party. Anyway, that's Sunday, the 29th, April 29th, at 1:30 at the Heritage Center, and so if you've ever done any volunteering at any of the organizations that is housed in the Kaiser Heritage Building, you are welcome, we've been sending out invitations, but certainly if you have been a part of that and for some reason did not get your invitation, you are welcome. That will be, part of that will be a preview of Kaiser Homegrown Theater's Fox in the Fairway, and that will be sort of the featured entertainment, and it will be a fun time. Also, there's a colored pencil exhibit over at the art, at the art museum.
Yes, gallery.
Yes, art gallery, thank you, at the Heritage Museum, and that is, there's a lot of really beautiful pieces there, and again, we encourage you to check out those, those organizations. We have the Kaiser Museum, the library, and the art gallery, and they're starting to get, I think, a lot more recognition, and that's good to see, and because they are wonderful treasure troves. Last week, we had our first track meet at McNary, it was rainy and cold and kind of awful, but I got to stand under a tent, so I can't complain. But those are always really fun. We have the only school in the league, I understand, that is fully staffed by volunteers, both staff and students, and so I think that's something really to be proud of, and that really encapsulates our volunteerism part of our motto, and so really proud of that, really proud of our kids, and there will be another track meeting this Friday, we're crossing our fingers for a little bit better weather, but nevertheless, that is happening, and that will be a lot of fun. There is, we got an email about the Ronald McDonald House Charity 5K Run, that's this coming Sunday at Riverfront Park in Salem, and if you are interested in either participating or donating, you can look at their website to find out more information. Again, that's the Ronald McDonald House Charities 5K Run. This Tuesday, tomorrow, there's a bond meeting at McNary, so this is a very important bond measure that is on our ballots for, for May, and it's important to be as educated as you possibly can about that, so there, and they've been doing a lot of community outreach as far as getting this, this word out. They were at our Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting, I think they've been to most of the Neighborhood Association meetings at this point, and again, it's just really important to be, to be educated as to what that bond provides for and so that you can vote accordingly. There's a, oh, Cherry City Comic Con is coming up this weekend, and that is very exciting. We have, this is a shameless plug, but we have a couple of local authors who have a booth there who are trying to sell their wares, I happen to be related to both of them, but nevertheless, it's a great time, we also have a few vendors from Tony's Kingdom of Comics and so forth will also have a booth there, so it is, it's a lot of fun, and so I encourage you to attend that if you are interested. The Drive For Your School Ford fundraiser that was scheduled last weekend at McNary that was canceled because of the storm has been rescheduled for April 28th, so again, that's a really easy way to make funny, to make fun, to make money for McNary for a variety of organizations within McNary, so that's a great thing to look out for, too, and that's all I have, thanks.
All right, lots of great stuff going on. Council President Parsons, what you got?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So last week, I had the Traffic Safety, Bikeway, and Pedestrian Committee Agenda, and as Counselor Freeman alluded to, there was some appearance of interested citizens, the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association expressed, I think what they thought was, this grant, Safe Routes to School, when you start the application for the grant process, one of the first things they're really going to look at is a Title I school. So Kennedy is a Title I school, Kennedy needs sidewalks, so they kind of put that, it's not that it's a priority over Cummings, it's just that Cummings at this time is not a Title I school and will not get that designation until September. The grant application, May, maybe late July, maybe August, we don't know if we're going to hit that timeline or not, so they just had some other suggestions about, you know, if the bond passes, the school is only going to put sidewalks to a certain part, that's it, they're going to stop, they're not even going to do the whole thing around, so they were concerned that maybe, you know, is there something that, you know, if we can't get a grant, is there something the city can do to piggyback onto that to minimize the cost? And so anyway, that was a big discussion, and it's going to continue, I think, to be a big discussion as long as, as we have those safety issues around the schools. So that was House Bill 2017, that's the projects, the committee is trying to get those narrowed down to, you know, one, two, three different projects before the grant process comes out. Right now, they're working on the Safe Routes to School, that's one of the first applications, I think the rules have already been approved, and so they're going to one more process, and I think they're going to start drawing up that information for the grant, so we've got a couple people that are watching that, so we know what we need to do when that comes. Then we talked about, basically, everybody has their own, like they have a spreadsheet, everybody has their own little thing that they, that they need to talk about, like what's a priority in the city, and they talked about, they talked about safety issues and as being probably one of the biggest things that we have to worry about, I mean, people are talking about sidewalks on Windsor Island, you know, side, some Wheatlands, I, you know, unfortunately, Kaiser is an older, well, the city itself's not old, but it's an older community that was built around farms and doesn't have sidewalks, and so there's a lot of, you know, Verta, there's all, a lot of streets that really need sidewalks, and it's, it's, got to come up with ways that we can hopefully maybe fund them in the future, I mean, it's a thing maybe we need to take to Kathy's Transportation Committee and talk about that, especially the streets like Wheatland and Verta and things like that, so we're going to have Mike Jaffe work on that for us, too, so, we'll work on that. And then they talked about the apple cookie, or the monster cookie, I'm sorry, monster cookie on April 29th, don't forget that, awesome, big cookie, whatever.
It's monstrous.
Monstrous, whatever it is, it's monstrous, so it's enormous, and anyway, so, it's a very, it's a very active committee, though, so I'm kind of glad to be a part of it, so that's good. Then I had the Marion County Breakfast, thanks Laura for filling in, as our third slot, always some good conversation. We talked about how they gave us the rules for recycling, but then they really weren't quite ready for it. Oh, had some issues around that a little bit at Marion County Recycling and at Lawrence and Valley and all that, so I think they're going to work on that, so. Kaiser Festival and Advisory Board Committee on Monday, we are going to approve three new bands. If anyone would like to preview those and have comments, you know, to me by next Monday, it is on the agenda for the Kaiser Festival's Advisory Board, there's links to each band and what they sound like, so if you guys want to give me input before then, that would be great. And let me see, and then, don't forget, May 1st and 3rd, our very favorite time of the year budget, and then on Thursday, I have, I will be filling in for, for Mr. Winter here at the Gubster Neighborhood, Thursday, 7:00 PM at Gubster School. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Helsa Herrera.
I got nothing this week. Actually, I did. Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Commission was very interesting, we had a report on, were you there? I got a big kick out of a local, Tricia Ratliff, who David's sister, made an interesting, her group did a report on homelessness, and it was very fascinating, the young man from AK that-
Roal.
Yeah, Roal, yeah, he's amazing, and I was just mesmerized by his speech, I mean, it was like amazing, I wanted him for our leadership group, but I was, some of the myths that we hear of homelessness or, you know, that's, I think they need to, there's some, there's some stories behind each person out there, and, you know, this thing we hear about two-thirds, and I don't buy it, but it was very interesting. Also, we had the, Dorsey did a great job on the parks thing, so I won't rehash that, but also with our Cow Club, which is our leadership club, we had the president, excuse me, the superintendent, God, man, I'm almost, the principal of Claggett Creek Middle School, Mr. Pearson, who came over and talked to us, our kids, and he did a great job on a wonderful preparation speech for middle school for our fifth, fourth and fifth graders, and boy, I tell you, he was amazing to listen to, his story, he came from a family of eleven, and boy, I'm just, this amazing story, if you get an opportunity to meet Mr. Pearson, he's a good guy. Thank you for covering Gubster, I have three, three things going on Thursday besides our bingo at school, bilingual bingo, we have the candidate forum in Marion County, and then we have the Sempre Unidos, which is another fundraiser. Thank you very much for covering for me. Also, next week, I have Points of Interest, and Monday, we have CTECH, will be Career Technical Education Advisory, and there was one more thing I was going to mention, oh yes, the biggest thing, and I want to emphasize with, I was going to say Commissioner Reed, I'm all over the place.
Got a promotion there.
But I mean, this, this meeting tomorrow at Counsel Reed, this meeting tomorrow is very important, that if, and those folks that want, have any questions, because I've heard questions about this upcoming $619 million bond, and all the infrastructure that's going to involve the safety and Kaiser, the benefits of Kaiser Schools, I've been looking into that, and so if you have any questions, anybody in the public, this is a meeting to go to. It's, I think it's the third one in Kaiser, they really have done an outstanding job in outreach, I mean, really, they're amazing. But anyway, please go to that, and again, it was nice to see Mr. Wren here, and I thank him for his volunteering, I know that the whole volunteering thing, they've been doing it, the whole family. That's pretty much all we have, next week will be a busy week, but we'll talk about that later. Thank you very much. Oh yeah, Rotary was a lot of fun.
Yeah, it was.
Just so you know, I've always bought one ticket, and my joke has always been, some rich guy gets richer because he buys 50 tickets, you know, Clint Holland buys 50 tickets, so, and I just feel really fortunate because not only is it going to help me, it's going to help, our Cow Club was looking for donations for, sponsor for our next field trip to Willamette and the Capitol and all that, and so now we got a sponsor, and some other good things have happened in our school that now that we can afford, so I'm really blessed, so thank you very much.
Awesome, good to share the blessing. Way to go. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to pick up on what Counselor Herrera was talking about, I'm going to emphasize one thing, that A, I wish I could have been to there, but I had some other duties at home, took, occupied my time, but as the president of another Rotary Club in this area, I would like to emphasize that whether you are a winner of a grand prize, or you just attend one of those awesome fundraising events, maybe you buy blue, or some berries, like the West Salem Rotary Club is just launching their berry purchase program today, or you do some, something else at another Rotary Club, I personally believe it's a great way to emphasize and underscore the value of a service club like Rotary, which does great works not just in our communities here, but also around the world. It is the number one leading private organization, not government, but private organization that has been one of the leading reasons why Polio is this close to being completely eradicated, and we're very thankful to have a little guy by the name of Bill Gates and his wife Melinda kind of tag on to our fine efforts, but I got to put in a good plug for Rotary, they do awesome things, and it's just a great to be part of. Real quick, tonight, I am missing the Middle School Music Festival, it's over at North Salem High tonight, but I know that the Whittaker Middle School Choir did outstanding tonight as well, and appreciate Matt Lawyer coming here and talking about the upcoming event this Saturday, that's going to be an awesome event, and it sounds like a heck of a lot of fun, so I hope we get a great turnout for that, and thanks again to Adams for kicking in the food, too. I think that's just outstanding, that we've got a local business willing to do that. One thing I attended recently was the April 11th meeting of the Kaiser Chamber Board is the liaison for that, and it's all Irish Festival all the time right now, so that's basically all I'll report on with respect to that. I will just report, just another upcoming event, the Whittaker Middle School Choir is going to be taking their annual trip, I'm glad they're able to do that, this year they're going down to Southern California, they're going to be gone next week, I know that because my eighth grade son is going to be there along with my wife and some others, good friends of ours there. We do have a budget meeting between now and our next meeting, I just need to personally say I will not be at the May 3 budget committee meeting because I'm going to be on my way to Southern California to catch my daughter graduating from college, so unfortunately, I will not be here for that, but I know y'all will do an awesome job at that, so I will be at the first meeting, though, that week. And then finally, I do have to, just another great group, Boys and Girls Club, they got a great little outlet here over at Kennedy, I believe it is, right? If you're not doing anything, May 4th and 5th, they're going to have their awesome Synchro to Micro fundraiser event down at the Salem Convention Center, it's a great way to have fun, come together and support an awesome organization in our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. I just have a couple of things to add to the plethora of things going on that benefit our community. I did meet with Becky Gilliam, Safe Routes to School, and she is very excited about the projects that are coming forward with, thanks to House Bill 2017, and I'm really glad that we're getting on it and making sure that we have projects that are ready to go, that's really critical. Went, attended the town hall with Representative Bill Post and Senator Kim Thatcher, that was hosted at the Kaiser Fire District on the 3rd, that was a great community-wide conversation with folks who came that night, a lot of talk about safety in our schools as well as some other really key issues, and also a kind of a recap on the short session at the legislature. of recap on the short session at the legislature. On the 5th, I attended MWA, the Mid Willamette Area Commission on Transportation, and I want to encourage everyone to go to the ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation, valuepricing.org is their online open house, and this has to do with the tolling through the Portland area. And if you're thinking that doesn't affect me, then you're not in business, or you're not going anywhere. This is something that we all need to weigh in on. Portland wants to hear from us. This isn't just saying, hey, you know, we just want to talk to ourselves. This is a statewide issue. The bottlenecks in Portland affect all of us. It affects the viability of our businesses. So I encourage everyone to please share out, go to ovaluepricing.org, the online open house. It is open through the 19th. Please go on and make your opinions known. On the 6th, I attended the League of Oregon Cities Regional Meeting that was here in Salem. It's a series of meetings that have been held around the state with our new executive director, Mike Cully. I encourage all of you, if you have an opportunity to attend any events with the League, to get to know our new executive director. He is really rocking and rolling. This is not the old League of Oregon Cities. There's some great new stuff coming, a lot of outreach. And one of the things I'm very happy to announce is that the League now has a seat at the table with the governor as they are working on the upcoming budget proposal. This is not something that's happened since 2005. And the League will now be present early rather than later, and like they say, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So moving on, thanks, somebody got my joke. I attended the Second Chance, yeah. Yes, that's a good one. Oldie but goodie. The Second Chance, and I deserve a second chance, right? So I went to the Second Chance Summit that, with Commissioner Kevin Cameron. I also, there were the Department of Corrections Director, Collette Peters, legislators, and other people who are involved on state level to look at what we are doing, not only here at Marion County, but some of these programs, ramp them up for more statewide outreach to help people be successful moving forward in their lives when they leave incarceration. The numbers speak for themselves in terms of the return on investment for when we invest in people, when they are leaving incarceration to be successful. We not only look at rebuilt lives, we also look at a reduction in the cost of services long-term. So if you want to know more about the Second Chance Tour and what that entails, it's secondchancetour.com. I know, so different. But it's a very exciting what they're taking, best practices, and well-established protocols for helping people be successful in leaving incarceration once and for all. The speaker at lunch was Scott Budnick, who is the founder and president of the Anti-Recidivism Coalition, and I really encourage you to check out his website as well. Great stuff happening for our community. And I'll make this available, we'll scan it in to send around to the rest of you. Another one I want to share with you is the meeting at SEDCOR, the Strategic Economic Development Corporation. The presentation on the 11th was alleviating the homeless crisis in the Mid Willamette Valley. I got to tell you, folks, everybody is getting it, that this is a comprehensive, community-wide effort to serve people, and behind every statistic is a human being. And it's complex, and it's necessary, and everybody's stepping up. That was the most highly-attended meeting of SEDCOR in years. And that's even considering the commissioner's state of the county. I think it may be only second to that, and that would be close. This was packed because folks were getting it. So the presenters were Connor McDonald of the Oregon Housing and Community Services, Jimmy Jones from the Arches Project, Mid Willamette Valley Community Agency, and Andy Wilk of Salem Housing Authority. And it was extremely comprehensive, very well done. I have some materials I will scan and share from that, and I believe some of it's also posted on the SEDCOR website. I encourage you to look at that. It really gets into the nuts and bolts, not only of what needs to happen, but also the data behind making sure we are providing well-informed and best practices in getting results for people in our community. I really want to applaud SEDCOR for understanding that this conversation had to happen, and it is happening. Way to go, and we've got some really good work going forward. We're also moving forward with the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative. Ally Trichol is doing a fabulous job in putting together the work plan and moving forward, the strategic plan, which was also addressed. Some of these things that are being done are part of that strategic plan. So we will scan and share that. Coming up, broadband. The county survey is now open. You heard a little bit about it. Dylan Duran spoke at the Neighborhood Association. If you want to weigh in, it is http://bit.ly, I guess that's a long thing, Marion Broadband. Or if you just type in Marion Broadband, it'll take you to that on a search engine. That survey is now open. They want to know what people think about the broadband service. Why does anybody care? Well, again, if you've been in business, what is the big, you know, constrictor aside from land and water and energy? Broadband. And communities have started their own broadband when they don't have any service at all. We do have service. They want to know where do we fit and what is this going to look like going forward. So please, again, share out. The county survey is now open on broadband. A couple of other things coming up is SCATS is next week, the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study. I will be meeting with the Steering Committee for the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative on the 26th. On the 27th, I'll be traveling to Grants Pass for OMPAC, which is the Oregon Municipal Planning Organization Consortium. I have to say that's slow. And everything else has been covered. So with that, yes, sir?
Thank you. Just, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. Sorry to hit you up and didn't give you a forewarn about that, but only because I am a resident of North Kaiser, there was a little article in the Kaiser Times that talked about something involving Wheatland Road.
Oh, yes.
Is that something you could maybe speak to?
You bet.
Please.
So Wheatland Road needs to be fully updated. We need to have the sidewalks complete, the bike lanes complete. And so rather than just connect the dots, which was part of the original idea, we would just kind of do a project to finish that, we're taking a step back to look at a comprehensive plan. What would redesign look like to ensure that we have complete sidewalks, bike lanes, but how could we design so that it's safe for bike, ped, freight, transit, and single occupancy vehicles, because all of them use that road? So Nate, also, maybe you can speak to some of this work that is being proposed for the study in 2020, if I remember correctly.
That's correct. So this is a project that has been authorized by the Salem, Salem.
SCATS. I already defined it.
Salem, you already said, good.
You're good.
SCATS. I'm safe, because I got, you know, the acronym COP in my right hand. Anyway, so it's a project that has been funded. This is a design study so that we can look at all the different aspects and the different impacts to the road to create an effective design that will effectively and safely address those issues, the pedestrian, the school conflicts, the speeds, all of those kinds of things. So that is a project that will take place in 2020. From then, we will then look at how we go to the next phase of acquiring funding for construction. And so, yes, it's a comprehensive look and not just a, well, let's infill a sidewalk here and there and then call it good. It's a matter of having extensive design, engineering design work to address the issues.
Okay. I would, just a concern that I have over just what I read in the article was the fact that you're, it's only going from River Road to Clear Lake, and that is not where the city limit ends, because I know, because I live on the city limit, where the city limit ends. And I'd really appreciate some consideration being given to the folks that live north of Clear Lake on that, number one. Number two, I don't know if there's an idea in terms of there being, I don't know, local town halls or some sort of information to be able to involve the public up there.
There will be a complete public process.
Let me just stress something. We have a lot of people, I mean, a lot of people of this town that live north or in that segment that's impacted by that. And so just involving those folks would be greatly appreciated. We don't have a neighborhood association up there at all. So that would be a great way to bring in some comment, so.
Well, as you may have noticed, we don't do much around here without public involvement. So that will be part of the project.
I appreciate that. I do, I just want to say I appreciate some attention being given to that because there are a lot of concerns, notably, you know, I run into this, thankfully, actually, I don't run into it, but I am well aware of the traffic that goes through there with respect to, notably from the gravel or in the cement operation down the road from us, because it goes right down Wheatland Road at multiple times during the day. So that's a safety concern. And then also, as someone who has run along the route there, you got a lot of people who do not stop at that big gigantic stop sign and stop line. Either they blow right past that, and some of us have almost been hit because people don't stop at the stop line. So anyway, those little factors would be great to be taken into consideration, and but really do appreciate this as a focus point. Thank you.
This has been a priority for quite some time in the transportation plan, and when we, we, and I'm going to give a lot of credit to Mike Jaffe at the Council of Governments and to Nate for saying, let's really take a comprehensive look. Let's see, we have the opportunity, we have the right of way. And I responded to somebody on Facebook, I'd rather do designs and signs, make sure it's designed correctly so that people will use it safely rather than feel like, oh, it's wide open, let's go, which is not safe, so. City Manager and then Councilor Ryan?
Good, Councilor Ryan.
Councilor Ryan, you had a question?
Just under other business.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait, or?
You had something on this?
No.
Oh, okay. So we're going to head to other business then? Or did you have something to weigh in on? Okay. With that then, I lost my agenda. There we go. I found it again. So this is other business. The Times provides you to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just do this because everybody's here. Department head tomorrow. I'm in training all day, so here at Urbinger Institute, no department head. Tracy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Tim?
All budget, all the time.
All budget, all the time. All right. Chief Teague, nothing? Phil?
Thank you, Chris. One thing I want to mention to the council and the citizens watching this before our next council meeting, the Dearborn Bridge Replacement Project will be underway. They will start May 1st. Dearborn will close to through traffic from Verta to, the detour route is actually going to be Rickman Road, but it will be open to traffic until about 13th. Access to the park on the, on the south end, Dearborn end, to Claggett Creek Park will be maintained as much as possible throughout the project. There will be times it will be closed, but that'll be a little farther down the road. Contractor is going to start with storm drain work first, realigning a 30-inch storm drain pipe up from, from near the bridge up to Verta, and then that will take them into destroying the existing roads so they can pull the existing bridge during the in-water work period and start building a new bridge. So the schedule right now is to close at May 1st, and it will be closed until about the middle of September. So message boards went out today, or yeah, today. They should be activated, notifying everybody when it's closed and how long it'll be closed. Please find an alternative route, local access is there for the people that live there, and just be patient while we get that bridge replaced.
All right. Councilor.
Yes, I had a question from the Traffic Bike Ways Committee the other day. They asked about the Woodbridge on Stinet Lane. Is that private property or public property?
Private.
Thank you.
It's private.
Nate?
Councilor Freeman had a question.
Bill, can you just give us a quick update? I know a little bit was talked earlier about burning the piles of trees and from the filberts. I know the neighbors, as I know you're very well aware, are anxious, nervous, probably all of the above. So can you just allude to potentially when, and then how are we going to notify all the neighbors?
I don't know when yet. Still waiting to make sure we have a likely farmer on board to do the farming so we can, without a doubt, burn the piles without breaking any rules. We don't want to be rule breakers. That's being done by volunteers. So as soon as we have a farmer, very likely, the volunteers can schedule the work. I will let the Kaiser Times know, we'll put it on Facebook. I'll send an email to the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, letting them know. Volunteers are working with the fire district on the most effective way to burn those piles hot to reduce the smoke. Yeah, I really expect it won't be what people think it's going to be as far as smoke goes. Seeing other piles of filbert debris burned in the area, most of the time, they're lit and they're left to burn. These aren't going to be left to burn, these are going to be encouraged to burn because the goal is to get rid of every bit of it. So, I mean, I can't guarantee it, but I expect the smoke will be less of a problem than people are concerned about, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
And one more thing is, I think everybody got in the mail, something from our water department?
Yes.
So do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. That brochure is something that we're required by the state drinking water program to produce. It's actually a national requirement. It's called a Consumer Confidence Report, and we have to report annually on the quality of our water, what samples that we take that fail, and the sampling that we do on any given annual basis changes depending on the regulations. But I'm very pleased to report, one, that we had a very glowing report. Two, we had a system-wide assessment done by the state this last year, and we received an outstanding performer designation. I think that's noted in there as well. It's the first time the city's been able to achieve that. That's a newer program, it's been in place for about five years now, and because of some previous bad samples, we don't get very many. We might get a few a year, but we had enough that it kept us from being an outstanding performer. The last year, we hadn't done. So please, everybody read the information. It's good, good, good information. Know about the water system and how pure and clean it is, and what your city water staff do to keep it that way.
All right. Thank you.
Nate?
Just want to make sure everybody has in their calendar, because I know it wasn't talked about today, but on the 26th is our first public outreach meeting of the Kaiser Revitalization Project that we have going. This is our Transportation Growth Management, or TGM, grant that we have. So please make sure it is on your calendar for here. It's an open house. There will be a presentation, but there will be stations around, and we want to hear the community and their vision for our Cherry River corridors and make sure that as we develop a plan and we consolidate all the work that has been done over the decades, that we hear from the public and we know what the public is concerned about, what their, what their goals and objectives are. I know we're working with the chamber and their community conversation that they had about this subject. We're sending an invite, specific invite, to everybody that was on that, at that meeting. So please make sure it's on your list. I know there is a ton of stuff going on between bridge closures and everything else we've got going. This is also moving forward dramatically. This week, we have our Citizens Advisory Committee, which Chris is participating on that. That's on Thursday. A week after that is this meeting. So we, we want to hear from the community. It's important.
Shannon?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, is there any other, you had some, Councilor Ryan?
Thank you. Excuse me, under other business, just real quickly, I apologize. I just want to mention that tonight, the nation lost a wonderful woman. Sorry, that's so silly. I get sad sometimes, but Barbara, we lost Barbara Bush today. And I have met her, I had the privilege of meeting her. We have very few women role models who have done and accomplished what she has, and so I just want to say how wonderful she is, and it's, it's something to aspire to be, the dedicated servant she was, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. I absolutely concur. Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any written communications tonight, agenda input, May 7th, at 7:00 PM, we will meet in regular session. On May 14th, we have canceled the work session in order for us to join with the celebration with Kaiser Fire District 70th Anniversary, and then on May 21st, we will meet in regular session, and of course, on May 1st and 3rd, we will join with the rest of the members of the Budget Committee to dive into the city budget. And those meetings will start at 6:00 PM, am I correct on that one?
I was right.
Okay, 6:00 PM on May 1st and 3rd. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, then it is, oh, wait, wait, come on down. One more thing.
One more thing.
Thank you again, Colleen Bush from Kaiser, and I apologize for this being so last second, but I realize I have a answer to City Manager's question about buses. I mean, I sent an email to Merrill Clark about an announcement of some federal grants, and can I read that really quick?
Quick, quick, yep.
Okay.
It's good news.
Okay. From the offices of Merkley, Wyden, and Walden, and Schrader, they announced major transportation grants to Oregon cities. U.S. Senators Jeff Merkley serves on the Senate Appropriations Committee, and Ron Wyden, along with Congressman Greg Walden, Kurt Schrader, and Kurt Schrader, today announced more than $6.5 million in grant funding for public transit agencies in Oregon. I'm so excited. Really quick, keeping our buses up and running keeps Oregon up and running, Wyden said. The investment in public transportation will ensure Oregonians in Salem and throughout the Rogue Valley, they also receive some money, can get around safely and reliably to the many places they need to go. The grant brings upgraded buses to Salem and Kaiser, that'll be our compressed natural gas buses, not the electric ones, but the compressed natural gas. Improving the quality of the transportation system throughout the community, said Schrader. Good, safe public transit is a foundational economic and cultural backbone for any community. Improvements to our transit in Salem-Kaiser will create greater access to local businesses and culture, increasing commerce and the arts throughout the community. Better transit also means fewer cars on the road, which will alleviate congestion and decrease the amount of carbon emissions we produce. I've been a bigger, big booster for Salem-Kaiser Transit here in DC, and have continuously advocated for their applications for federal funding. This announcement is a great federal investment in our state capital, and I'm proud to, for of the work the Salem-Kaiser Transit does for the entire Salem-Kaiser community. And then here's the information. The U.S. Department of Transportation awards transit improvement grants through a competitive process. Merkley and Wyden in March announced that the program received $9.73 billion in the 2018 spending bill, including $1.147 billion for bus and bus facilities grants. The Salem Area Mass Transit District was awarded a nearly $2.5 million bus and bus facilities grants to purchase new buses, which will run on compressed natural gas. This funding will help ensure we meet our communities' evolving needs for mobility and connectivity, said Robert Krebs, President of the Salem Area Mass Transit District's Board of Directors. But this represents more than the purchase of new buses, this is about continuing to grow a robust public transit system to better serve the greater Salem-Kaiser community.
Great news.
That's from the office of Jeff Merkley.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for allowing me to extend the meeting.
Hey, we'll, with more money coming in for good things, you bet. All right, it is 9:16, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.